Mic check, one, two, one, two.
All this meeting to order, the Zebulon Commissioners Works Session Meeting. We need the approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda?
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Motion pass.
All right, so at the last meeting, this got tabled, the budget amendments for administration. We have two. One is dealing with the professional services for administration that is lacking due to the desire to bring in an interim town manager, as well as we hired Good Hope Works and developmental, Good Hope Works to do the planning director, and then we need to allot some funds for developmental associates for the police chief position, and that's a total of $52,000. And then the second one is the advertising budget was budgeted for $10,000, and due to all the positions we've had to advertise for and hire, we are in the hole on that one, so we need an additional $26,000 to get us through to the end of the year.
Is that going to cover all of the additional positions that still need to be advertised for and hired?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Are there any additional thoughts from the manager or the assistant town manager?
No, I don't have anything. I think I took a look at this budget amendment. I think that the numbers line up, and I agree with Ms. Barkley.
Discussion? So, we will need to vote on this?
We'll need two separate motions, one for each ordinance, please.
Okay. Professional service, do I hear your motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 2025-18.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a roll vote. Commissioner Davis, Commissioner Clark, Commissioner Daniels? Harrison, Harrison. Commissioner Miles.
Favor, sir.
Commissioner Baxter.
Favor.
Motion passes. Next is the advertising ordinance, 2025-19. Is there a motion?
Sure, I make a motion to approve ordinance 2025-19.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? A roll vote. Commissioner Baxter.
Favor.
Commissioner Miles.
Favor.
Commissioner Harrison.
Favor, sir.
Commissioner Clark. Commissioner Davis.
Favor.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next is... Information Technology Budget Amendments.
Good evening. Yes, so I have an IT budget amendment for unforeseen IT projects that we had that were connectivity issues, which disrupted both our voice and internet services, affecting our ability to perform essential duties for the town. Firehouse experienced allergies due to damaged wires and needed additional access points. Our maintenance staff, they were impacted as they had to step outside to take support calls, so we had to increase access points there as well, due to poor connectivity. So, and additionally, we have outdated dial-up service over at our Public Works, which is inadequate with leading the decisions to replace. So, we had to make a decision to replace our primary dial-up service and our backup dial-up service with fiber connectivity. So, we're in the process of having that connectivity completed at this time. So, with those changes, it brings improvements for us to enhance connectivity, ensuring reliable phone and internet services so that we will better have access and better support the daily operations for the town.
Is that a transition?
Speak into the mic, please.
I thought I was.
I can't hear you.
Is that a transition to fiber, then, from dial-up?
Yes, we will transition it from dial-up to fiber, but we will keep one of the spectrum lines as a backup, just in case if there's an unforeseen issue with fiber. So, we'll still have a rollover because of the issues that we have.
It's important for us to have redundancy. Thank you so very much.
Questions, comments from the board?
I can make a motion, ma'am.
Go right here.
I make a motion that we approve technology project ordinance 2025-20.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Roll vote. Commissioner Davis.
Favor.
Commissioner Clark. Commissioner Harrison.
Favor.
Commissioner Baxter.
Favor.
Commissioner Miles.
Favor.
Motion passing. Thank you. Next, Staff Report. Administrator's Strategic Plan Grant. Assistant Manager Williams.
Thank you, Board and Commissioners. Essentially, I'm kind of late to the party on this one. I think we've been considering it for a little while now, and wanted to make sure we're getting it right before we roll it out. I believe it was first presented to the Board back in September, and, you know, there was some discussion there. We've talked about it in the months since, and then most recently, at the January meeting, there was still some discussion that the Board wanted to have, I think particularly relating to a few questions that came up earlier this month, before there was a comfort from the Board to approve the Strategic Plan Grant and begin advertising the opportunity and making it available for our local nonprofits to take advantage of. I believe the Board wanted to kind of review those strategic, what some of those questions were here in open session. Were there any particular questions, or should I just roll out, or should I just begin at the top discussing what the questions were, what the latest iteration of the questions were, and what those answers are? Start from the top?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Okay. So, there was a question relating to the insurance requirements, and why the town would need to be included on the insurance. This is a fairly standard practice for any nonprofit that's getting town funds, and especially if their activities are in the town limits, that the Town of Zebulon would be protected from any liability that would show up, or any liability or any accident that would occur, where the impacted might see that the fact that the town funded this and then didn't properly vet the event, they would try to, they could potentially see the town as partially liable for the incident. And so, it's just really common practice as a risk mitigation tactic to have the nonprofit insure not only the event, but add the Town of Zebulon as an additional insured to protect not only the town, but also make sure that that coverage is available for any participants in the activities funded by the town. That's a, you know, without reading word for word, what I, you know, what I sent to you all was a little bit more, you know, I guess technical, but that's essentially the summary that I'm able to offer of my response there. Are there any particular questions related to that response? Okay, I'll move on to the next question. The next question was related to, the Strategic Plan Grant refers to a grant committee, and so what would the committee's purpose be? How would that work? And would their role be a duplication of work, since the Commissioners will also be reviewing and rating? And really, it's just a pre-screen, if you will, so the committee, the grant committee, who would be nominated by members of the Board to review the applications, would give that third-party first look, pre-screen, to the applicants, and then their recommendation is what's put forward to the Board. So, I think it off- So I think it offers the board an opportunity for basically the, a committee of your peers, essentially, a committee of peers would review the grant opportunity, submit a recommendation. The board can choose to take that recommendation or not, but then the board doesn't look like they are choosing their favorites, right? They're coming off of a recommendation provided to them by a committee that has already prescreened the application. And again, I could see how it would be, you know, a concern of duplication. However, it's really just kind of second eyes on it and an opportunity for the committee to be heard by regular people who see the merits of the work that they're doing here in the community. Again, that's a overview of the answer I provided, but are there any further questions as it relates to that matter?
Any comments, questions from the board?
The only thing that we might need to create verbiage about when we're doing committee selection is perhaps something surrounding if any member of the committee is participating in, is related to an applicant. You know, like if they are a part of an organization that has applied for grant funding, that they will not be allowed to weigh in on that particular grant application. Does that sound fair to everyone?
So you're basically stating if you're on the board of that specific organization.
All right, so let's say that I choose someone from, like, let's say I select Wendy Watson to be on the board and Wendy's organization working with youth applies for a grant. Would it make sense to have Wendy weigh in since it's her organization applying for the grant? Or would we just need to be cognizant of that when it comes to us for decision?
What I'm hearing from you, Commissioner Baxter, is essentially a bias policy or a nepotism policy and maybe asking those committee members to recuse themselves if they have a conflict of interest before voting or to even make us aware that there might be a conflict of interest.
I think that that would be at least like, to be transparent, that, you know, like if you are participating or on the board of one of the grant, you know, if your board is a grant applicant, it should at least be made known.
Yeah.
And usually, the board has, can ask that also, you know. Anytime somebody comes before something, is there a conflict of interest?
Sure, but I'm just saying like for the committee members or even just verbiage that they have to let the board of commissioners know if they are seated on a board who has come before us for grant funding. And it could just be as easy as that.
Mm-hmm.
Comments? Is this something that we can just add into the?
If I could offer, maybe once the committee is selected, it's a simple statement that we have each of the committee members sign, a bit of a decorum policy or something to that effect. I don't know exactly what it's called, but just maybe have them sign off that if they have some sort of conflict of interest or if there's, you know, opportunity for bias that they would try to recuse themselves from any vote that might be a conflict and then just have them sign off on it and that's the way they can honor or acknowledge the intention that I think you're trying to get at, Commissioner Baxter. Does that sound, so then it would be something in practice and not necessarily baked into the policy?
Yeah, I don't think it needs to necessarily be addressed here at this time, but I think moving forward, when we do committee selection, that might be something that we want to either discuss or we just have a little page, one liner to sign.
And so conflict of interest would also cover if someone on the committee. So conflict of interest would also cover if someone was like, for example, for our board, if we are voting on something and we are, we're gonna, if any financial gain or any kind of conflict of interest will also cover anything like that, right?
Yeah, I would think so. I'm starting to get out of my depth here, so if Eric, you wanted to jump.
We already have to recuse ourselves if we're sitting on a board of grant funding that's coming before us. We already have to. We're just saying like we're asking.
Right, I'm saying so do they have, like, I'm saying.
I think we can bake that in and I would certainly have, I would certainly have our town attorney to look at that, to make sure that conflict of interest does also say that any financial benefit is acknowledged or that they recuse themselves if there's any sort of financial gain.
Okay.
So, yeah, I think that there's, I think that there's ways that we can make sure to cover that in the statement that we would ask all of the committee members to read and acknowledge and attest to.
Sure.
Does that sound okay, town attorney?
There's two elements of the conflict of interest and one is statutory, which is if you're on the board of a nonprofit and you're also an elected official, that is considered a conflict, period, end of story. But the most, the most common kind of conflict of interest is on financial matters where an elected official or a person who's voting on the matter has a financial interest or someone in their family has a financial interest. So that's, that breaks out.
Okay, thank you. There's any more questions on that one or you ready for me to move on to the next question? Yeah, okay. The next question was surrounding quarterly and biannual reports being submitted. Who would they be reviewed by and against what criteria? Excuse me. I believe that, you know, while the policy doesn't necessarily address that, we would like to see the administration of the strategic plan grants live with our finance department, who is going to be the entity that's really reporting out about the success of the grant, distributing the grant and also then would need to be closest to it for auditing purposes. So then the finance department would receive those reports. That's who they'd be submitted to and I think that they would be reviewed by the board of commissioners. A basic staff report review would essentially cover grant compliance. Are they spending the money on what they say they're going to spend the money on? Are they still active nonprofit status? And hopefully, excuse me, and hopefully that report would, you know, really speak to the impact they're making in the community just so that we can come back to you all and let you know how those dollars are benefiting our town. And so, you know, although we haven't, we don't have the report parameters necessarily defined at this point, I think in practice it would be fairly basic review for the staff just to make sure we're compliant and can move forward for auditing purposes, but as far as the success, that would really be measured by the board. Any questions there? I've been talking too much today. Will there be a new committee? The next question was, will there be a new committee selected each budget season? Again, not spelled out directly in the policy, but I think that is probably the intention. However, it would be up to the board. I do think that year over year, it'd probably be hard to, you know, just make that committee, you know, nominate that committee all over again. So if you want to make that explicit in the policy, we can, whether it, we are choosing a committee over again, but I think likely we're going to just need to nominate a committee year over year. Any additional thoughts or questions? I think so. I think I'm fine. It's just, it's just one little thing. The next question was whether, the policy refers to a blind review process and so that we would redact any identifying information about the nonprofit. So if we redact that information, how will the committee be able to verify the applicant's information? So basically, the applicant's information will be verified by staff, you know? Who, are they who they say they are? Is the nonprofit a valid nonprofit or not? And then the blind review process just takes away, again, any bias that may be there for the board. So some assistance is coming my way. I appreciate it. I haven't had a cough all day, but I think, think I'm just talking too much now.
And to manifest it during our meetings.
Do you? Well, once you need to cough, once you need to cough, if you don't get a proper cough out, then you just want to cough more, so apologies.
Yep, it's true.
So essentially here, with the blind review process, it's just to take that bias away. The applicant's information is verified, but as far as if the committee had a preference towards the Boys and Girls Club, for example, all they would see is the activity that the Boys and Girls Club plans to carry out and not necessarily who the entity is doing it.
For some of them, we're going to be able to, you know, they'd be able to easily suss out because they've either been operating for a very long time in our community or they're one of the few people that do what they do, but I think that it's overall a good policy.
Any other, anything else I need to address in that answer? Lastly, where does, the policy refers to a video being offered, a video submission to tell more about what the applicant, what the application says. So whereas the application may, you know, obviously verbally or, you know, in black and white on paper, say what somebody's going to do, I think a video or even a presentation here in, you know, at a board meeting really shows the enthusiasm, the excitement, the passion for the organization. And so the video was just to say, if you're not comfortable making a live public speaking pitch for your project, then you're able to submit a video. And so that's all that that refers to there. But really, it's just the case that if they, if they don't want to submit a video, then they can, they can come before the board and explain their application. If they explain to the board, then they do not need to do a video. They don't need to do, they don't need to do both.
And then at the bottom of, it's either page three of the actual strategic plan grant or page 11 of the entire packet document, there is a section labeled eligibility. And what I have noticed is that while we address the $2,000 grant and the $5,000 grant, we don't address the $1,000 grant. So could we please add that in there that the, you know, like what the eligibility for the $1,000 grant would be? And I would assume that that is also going to be new nonprofits could apply for that one or the $2,000 grant and then a, an established nonprofit could apply for whichever one that they feel meets their needs.
Yeah, so, so my understanding is the $1,000 grants were, have already been given out?
They have, but this is, this is our strategic plan grant policy, so like going forward, instead of having to address this again in the next fiscal cycle, if we just take care of it now.
Right, so don't retroactively apply it, but for the next?
Yes.
Okay, understood, yeah, we can make that change.
Okay.
We can make that change. Okay.
And so when we go for approval, should it, should the approval verbiage be as amended?
That's right, yes. The amendment to make sure that the policy also addresses the $1,000, which is, it's five.
It's five $1,000 grants, correct.
For a total pot of twenty, a total, $25,000.
Yes, yes. And we still have yet to award $20,000.
Right.
Yes, okay.
That's right. We can make that change. Now am I making you cough? All right, the last, the last question that came to our office was an understanding of what the W-9 form is, what is the reason that we ask for this form? Although it sounds like a very, like kind of tax-forward form, it's, it's really just a request for taxpayer information so that the grantee, in our case, the town, is collecting all of the relevant information needed so that we can then go on to fill out a 1099 so that the entity will receive that documentation for them to report to the IRS. So it is a very, very standard document. We ask all of our vendors, every vendor, even if, so for example, as a town employee, if I were to go out and need reimbursement for something, I would have to fill out a W-9 form to make sure that I was able to, so that the town was able to cut me a check for that, for that dollar amount. So it's a very, very common, common form, although it's, when it's referred to as just W-9, I think it feels like, you know, like a W-2 is what people are very familiar with, which is a complicated document that all of us don't really care to, care to deal with. But W-9 is actually a fairly standard, simple form, one pages, a one-pager even. So if there are, is that a sufficient answer on the, on the W-9? Those are all the questions we got into our office, but certainly happy to address any other questions.
Any other questions, comments from the board?
Thank you for going through those. I just wanted to state that I know we've tabled this a few times and I think the importance is for this board, we just have a due diligence to make sure as we're creating a policy that we all have a full understanding and an agreement of what this policy entails because this is funds that are going to be affecting people who are starting organizations and those organizations or their organizations are already in effect, but those organizations are beneficial to our town. So I just wanted to make sure that we all have clear understanding of what it is. So thank you for answering all those questions. Again, those are going to affect organizations that have already come before us and then those that are going to come, which leads to the next part that I did want to just discuss because I did bring this up to your attention today. You know, we are always concerned, we do have major organizations here, like the Boys and Girls Club is one of our largest, but we know that as a municipality grows that we're going to have more citizens who are starting 501(c)(3) that are going to want to come and be interested in getting some of these funds. And so I wanted to make sure that we all have an understanding of how we get that information out, that these funds are readily available and that as new organizations come, that they can be a part of it and that we're not just giving money to the same organizations that come before us year after year. And that's not to say that they're not important to us anymore, but this is a small amount of money that we want to distribute to the maximum. So if we can just kind of figure out what that looks like, that'd be really great.
I think just when we, when we spoke earlier today, Commissioner Davis, I think it's important that with this new policy, the way we advertise the availability of funds will be totally different than, than what has been offered in the past, you know? While I am sure, you know, of course, I wasn't here at the town at the time, I'm sure the town made an effort to make available or to advertise that funds were available, but I know there's been a concentrated effort, especially with the addition of, of staff like our communications director, to really find non-traditional or more creative ways of outreach. And so through that, we've built a listserv that I just, I don't think the town has had in the past of inviting, you know, residents to, to make sure we have their contact information, making sure various organizations have given us their contact information and that we're keeping that more up to date than we have in the past. And so for all of those reasons, I think that, and even our social media presence is a little bit more robust than it's been in years past. So hopefully through all of those channels and efforts and then certainly, you know, continuing to improve upon those, the, the big guy, quote unquote, you know, not only the big nonprofits will hear about this opportunity and be available to respond, but also some of those smaller entities that I think you're concerned about and some of those more infant stage nonprofits will, will, will know what's happening as well as those adult organizations, if you will. So I do think, you know, I can pledge that we'll make an effort to, to reach those as many folks as we can so that they know that the opportunity is available to them.
Thank you.
And along those lines, if we already have their contact information, some way just to send it directly to them, because a lot of times organizations have changes within the organization and this person may have been the one that was supposed to do. the organization and this person may have been the one that was supposed to do the ask and it didn't get done. So, just as a friendly reminder to those organizations that it's time, you know, let's get your request in or whatever.
Absolutely, absolutely. And if you do have any of that contact information, please feel free to share it with me and I'll make sure it gets with the right folks who are going to be, really making sure that we push this opportunity out to the community.
Just as long as, like I said, we as the Board even ensure that that information gets out, whatever that looks like. I like, I like your idea what you're doing, but even if it's word of mouth, just because we know, like I said, if you've been in this town for a while, you've already seen the funds you're looking for, but if you're brand new to this area and you don't even know that it's readily available, this opportunity can be missed. So, we just want to ensure that we do everything we can on our part, that they have the opportunity and the knowledge. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other questions, comments from the Board? And this document, just like any other document, is a living, breathing document, and it always is subject to additions, amendments, and change. So, as we move forward through this process, nothing is written in stone. So, just keep that in mind. If you've got questions that may come up later on, just forward those on to staff. I think we're ready for a vote.
I would like to make a motion to approve the Strategic Plan Grant as amended.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion further? Roll vote. Commissioner Baxter.
In favor.
Commissioner Miles.
Favor.
Commissioner Davis.
Favor.
Commissioner Clark.
Favor.
Commissioner Harrison. Motion passed. Thank you. Allowed per NCG General Statute 143-318.11 to consult with the Attorney to preserve attorney-client privilege concerning the Deacon Development Group LLC versus Town of Zebulon Case Number 24CVS020692-910. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
Make a motion to go into closed session.
Second.
There are second?
Second.
Okay.